Of the United States of America and the Republic for which this stands, one nation on your god, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning, everybody.
Good morning.
All right. Christian Warren, if everybody's here, I have a moment.
I make a motion to approve the minutes of the December 27th meeting.
I'll second that.
Mr. Warren, say my question, I'll approve the minutes of the December 27th meeting. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, item two.
Make a motion to approve item number two is listed on the agenda.
I'll second that.
Mr. Warren, say my question, I'll approve item two on the agenda. To the cash disbursements, electronic payments. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Item three.
Make a motion to approve item number three is listed on the agenda.
I'll second that.
Mr. Warren, say my question, I'll approve item three on the agenda. To ratify or approve the following seminar requests for payments. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, item four.
Make a motion to approve item number four is listed on the agenda.
I'll second that.
Mr. Warren, say my question, I'll approve item four on the agenda. To ratify, accept, or regret the resignation of Hunter Williams. Corrections officer. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Aye.
Make a motion to approve item number five is listed on the agenda.
I'll second that.
Mr. Warren, say my question, I'll approve item five. To ratify or approve the transfer of Paul Seaman from part-time corrections to full-time. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Is that the right amount?
It is. It was prior to the January 1st lawsuit.
Oh, okay.
Item six.
Okay. I'll make a motion to approve item number six is listed on the agenda. I'll second that.
Mr. Warren, say my question, I'll approve item six on the agenda. To approve the hiring of Jordan Holtzman of Bayonne to the open part-time corrections office. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Item number seven.
Make a motion to approve item number seven is listed on the agenda.
I'll second that.
Mr. Warren, say my question, I'll approve item seven on the agenda. To approve the hiring of Anthony Bartox of Montrose, the open part-time position corrections officer. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Item eight.
Make a motion to approve item number eight is listed on the agenda.
I'll second that.
Mr. Warren, say my question, I'll approve item eight on the agenda. To approve the hiring of Christine Bennett of Bennington, New York, the open part-time position corrections officer. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Item nine.
Make a motion to approve item number nine is listed on the agenda.
I'll second that.
Mr. Warren, say my question, I'll approve item nine on the agenda. To ratifying now is the hiring of Amanda Mangan of Thompson, the open full-time position of second deputy clerk of courts. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Item ten.
Make a motion to approve item number ten is listed on the agenda.
I'll second that.
Mr. Warren, say my question, I'll approve item ten on the agenda. Ratifying now is the hiring of Catherine Swingle of South Montrose, the full-time non-union position first deputy paternity clerk of courts. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Item eleven.
Make a motion to approve item number eleven is listed on the agenda.
I'll second that.
Mr. Warren, say my question, I'll approve item eleven on the agenda. To authorize the Tax Chamber Bureau to accept any price negotiated by Jason Miller, tax claim bureau director on each of the properties, on the 2018 repossessory properties. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Make a motion to approve item number twelve is listed on the agenda.
Didn't we buy two vehicles already for the...
No, we only bought one. The DA's office bought the other one. This is not for those people. This is for a K-9 vehicle.
K-9, for the dogs?
For the dog.
Is it an SUV or a truck?
It's a four-door pickup truck.
I'll second that.
Mr. Warren, say my question, I'll approve item twelve on the agenda. To purchase the 2018 F-150 police responder. Proca. To the district attorney's office for a K-9. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Item thirteen.
Make a motion to approve item number thirteen is listed on the agenda.
I'll second that.
Item thirteen, Mr. Warren, say my question, I'll open and we're following the review of the solicitor engineering firm sealed bids for the Sotan Construction Facility project, a generator project. Questions or comments?
Can you describe the project a little bit more? What does that mean?
It's to replace the generator at the jail so the new generator will run the entire jail. The generator we have will not maintain operation for the entire facility.
And the generator is run on what kind of energy?
This will be run on natural gas.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Open the bids. First one is from Jury Selector. And their price is $397,000. Next one is from Ari Lesnick. And that one is $438,550. Next one is from J.R. Noto. And that one is $427,000 even. Next one is from Spectrum Electric.
$745?
Yes. Ebron Electrical Contractors is next. We're real happy we got this many bids. That's a good sign. Ebron Electrical Contractors. This one is $398,945. Next one is Macari Construction.
Company?
Macari. B-A-C-R-I. $271,386.
Big difference, huh?
Next one is from Lever. That's L-E-V-E-R. $394,400. And the last one is from Schuler Haas. That's S-C-H-U-L-E-R-H-A-A-S. And that one is $375,200. The bids will now go to the engineering company and to our solicitor for review. And will be awarded to the closer better meeting those reports. And I will not set it tonight.
Who's the engineering company?
What's that?
The engineering company?
Our engineering company is GPI. They're out of montage. Loser country.
Thank you.
They're our county engineers. All right. I'll give them the next issue. Item fourteen, please. Vera?
Yes, I've been reading and hearing all kinds of things about the... Who's going to be the next DA? And it looks like we have the assistant DA became the DA. And then I hear that he doesn't meet the requirements for residency. He doesn't, he just rented a home in Franklin Township, December 20th. And maybe is renting on Chinango Street in Montrose. And that Judge Legge is not happy with this situation. And that's an outside judge sworn in in a different county. Can you give us an update of what is actually going on? What's the real news on this situation?
Well, I'm sure everybody has the same question in this room, so... Yes, there appears to be a difference of opinion between the assistant district attorney and the ALPC and the judge as to who is taking over that office. The assistant district attorney did have himself sworn in in Luzerne County by a district magistrate. The judge has appointed a district attorney, but has not sworn that person in yet.
And who is...
Our judge, Judge Legge, has appointed a district attorney to serve as acting DA. Is that correct?
No, that's not what I said.
Okay, I want to be clear.
What I said was the judge has appointed a district attorney.
So what's his name?
Okay, well, let me finish talking, please. The judge has appointed a district attorney, but has not sworn that individual in. So therefore, that person is not the district attorney until that person gets sworn in. The judge will not swear in. My latest understanding from the judge through our solicitor is he will not swear in until it gets heard at the Superior Court, which is hopefully going to happen this week. So there's a difference of opinion between the two offices. Documentation has been filed. Well, let me put it this way. The assistant district attorney filed a legal action against the judge saying that the judge is wrong and that he's right, which has prompted the Superior Court hearing to take and get this cleared up, which is what the judge had asked to be done. And the judge did not want to swear anybody in to create more confusion or problems. In the meantime, the commissioners yesterday took legal action against the assistant district attorney because he appointed a special counsel for the district attorney's office to handle this case. It's our determination through our solicitor. He does not have the authority to do that. So we have filed an action against him to have that individual removed as counsel. And that is at the courts upstairs for the judge to handle and deal with that.
May I ask, who is serving or acting district attorney right now, today?
Okay, the law states that in the vacancy of the district attorney, the assistant district attorney will assume the responsibilities until either someone is appointed or elected.
And he's doing that?
And he's fulfilling the requirements of the office right now.
Thank you.
So once they figure it out in Harrisburg, and then the judge will know and the assistant district attorney will know, then they can determine who's who. And then at that point, the commissioner is going to start paying somebody. Currently, we're not paying anybody at the district attorney's salary.
What is the district attorney's salary?
I think it's a little over $170,000.
And what about the DA? What's his salary?
I mean, I'm sorry, that's the DA's salary.
Okay. And what about the assistant? What is his salary?
Hmm, it's around 40, 45, something like that.
Such a big difference.
60, I think.
60, I'm sorry.
60,000, so it's...
There's a lot of stake.
That's a big difference, huh? More than half less.
A lot less responsibility, too. And then the other question.
Who knows who the judge appointed? Who in this courthouse knows who the judge appointed?
Oh, I think everybody does.
So can you tell us? Who's the, who did he appoint?
He appointed Marion O'Malley.
Oh. Interesting.
Yes.
My question, just to follow up, was there will not be a special election to re-elect the district attorney because that's an elected position?
No, that's not what the county code calls for. County code either calls in this situation for someone. In a normal situation, the first assistant district attorney would step in and take over. But because of the issues with the questions of residency and whether the person is willing and able, that's where the uncertainty comes and that the judge is working on. But in either case, if we didn't have a first assistant district attorney, then it would be an appointed position by the judge until the next municipal election.
Until the next election. And when would that be?
2020.
That's in 2020. So that goes all the way until then.
Right.
November 19.
November 19, yeah.
To start in 2020.
Start in 2020.
Yeah. Other question. Vera?
I've been hearing all kinds of complaints about, several of them from friends and people in the borough of Montrose because of the constant noise and roar of the Ricky site on Coleman Road, a Carrizo gas site. And it's been going on for about a month. And I hear it, too. When I'm in town, all the way down 29, you know, near Tree Heav and all the way up. And it's a constant roar, day and night. Is there anything that you, the commissioners, can do? Because maybe you can ask them to put up a sound wall like we did with XNG. And I took my sound meter and it was over 55 decibels in front of that site. And there's homes right across the road. Is there anything we can do to these companies? Plead with them? Put up a sound wall, even if it's temporary, and give the place and people a break? It's at least a month, it looks like, and they're still doing it.
Piggybacking on top of Vera's comment. Let's be real about this. With the infrastructure in place, we haven't even scratched the surface of what's going to happen up here. There is such a thing, quiet enjoyment. People are entitled to that, especially in a tenant lease situation. But where it's 55 decibels outside my bedroom window during the night, all I can say is I'm glad my childbearing years are over, that recent study. There's no need for this. They can, something can be done.
Has anybody contacted the company and asked them if they'd do anything? Have any of the residents that are there talked to their township supervisors to see if they'd talk to them and get something done?
Well, I'm going to the borough meeting on the 5th of February, but...
Is the Ricky, is it in the borough or is it in the township?
It's in Bridgewater.
Right. So, you know, Bridgewater Township supervisors should be the ones that should be approached, ask them, the work...
Why should the enrichment of one person be impacting hundreds, if not thousands, of people? That's really not right. There's something wrong with that.
Well, I, listen, you know, you're entitled to your opinion. I don't totally disagree with you. But unfortunately, the rules and laws are what they are. And, you know, until the courts or the judges or the legislators pass something different, this is not...
Or we bring a case. For enrichment. That's not right.
But I agree with you. We need to contact Carrizo, which also has another name. It looks like a Thailand or Asian company is buying them. So I see two names on their sign. And we need to contact Carrizo and the Bridgewater Township people. Besides, we're contacting you and then also the DEP. But DEP has nothing to do with sound. I've already contacted them.
Right.
So the thing is, all residents who are concerned may contact also with your representatives. I also spoke with and left a message for Representatives Fritz. So talk to your representatives. Tell them what's going on. See what alternatives could be done. Because there was a sound wall put up at a site in Franklin Township years ago on Franklin Township Road or something, but it was the Holmbach site. They put up a sound wall. The people were complaining they were living right next door to it. And so something can be done if people just voice their concerns instead of just maybe one person saying...
The first step we should do is contact the township supervisors. Ask the township supervisors who have a working relationship with these gas companies to talk to them and see what they'll do for them.
Can I step back to your generator?
Yes.
Is, is that, are the prices that you received in the bids are those in line with what the, you know, you expected from...
Yeah, pretty much. I mean, there's a wide range of now going... The one's a little bit lower than I thought it would be. So we'll have to look at that. You know, like I said, the engineers and everybody will have to look at it and see and make sure, you know, it meets all the specifications.
And coupled with that, I assume that actually also includes the generator?
Yes.
Okay. And is there gas at the jail yet?
Yes.
So the gas line is in?
No, I'm sorry, we're running propane. I'm sorry. The gas line is not in. We're running propane. The line is run, but we have no gas to the jail yet. Right now, we're running liquid propane. Which is okay because the price we're paying for liquid propane is pretty cheap, compared to natural gas.
So propane is cheaper than gas right now?
It is for us because we buy such volume. Yes.
Maybe ask him.
Well, I'm going to get him. He's got a little presentation for us.
Oh, okay. I was going to ask, too, the XNG site. I'd like to know what happened to stop the Mercaptin odor because the odor was happening for months. And then I know that the county has been inquiring about it. I've been inquiring other citizens because the odor was so bad off the site. DEP has been called, OSHA has been called. What actually stopped that odor finally around Christmas time? What we just...
I know that DEP made several visits to the site and were working with the company to resolve the issue. So I would have to say it was by the work of the DEP and their agents.
But do you know what the issue was, actually? What was actually releasing that off the site for so many months? Don't know the specifics? Thank you.
Mr. Ronnie Burton?
My name is Ronnie Burton. I live in Halsted. I was a lineman for 44 years and every day Saturday, I'm here now. I've been working on a little project down in, at Biggerton University with four graduate students. And we're working on a mechanical storage unit for electricity. And if you've been following what's going on with NYSERD down in New York State, they've been focusing on the microgrids and dispersed generation. And just to feed into your jail, you could set up solar, wind, and some other facilities to actually sell power back to the utility company, recouping some of your investment. Just to get off topic a little bit. That's what they're doing for hospitals, sewer plants, jails, fire departments, schools. They're setting up these microgrids so that facility stays working. Because when Sandy came through and destroyed everything, certain people had power and others didn't, but they couldn't get the power to them because the grid was down. So they've taken this dispersed generation and put it in the critical areas where they're taking it right down to where the emergency room in hospitals has their own microgrid. And it doesn't run on propane or gas. It's run by solar and energy, you know, battery packs. And these things are getting so sophisticated now that these people will be able to run for days. I was out for three days. And I went down and talked to the guys and I explained to them I used to work for this company. Could you take this lamp off the transformer? They get me back on. I worked for New Jersey, but you didn't get the thing on the computer, you got to do it. And I said, "Well, wait a minute." And I said, "I put all this switch gear in so I can keep the lights on and you're not going to do it." Because the tubs were broken down by railroad.
Yep.
So just down there is a set of switches by the library and then there's some down great bend setup.
Right.
Take the lamp off the floor, you know, because they had a red tag so those guys would work on it.
Right.
And I said, "Get the clearance and get on, we'll be back on." Well, anyway, to make long story short, mechanical storage unit, I call them the kids because they're younger than me, but they're extremely smart. I couldn't believe how dumb I was. But anyway, we took this custom torque spring motor. And the value of this thing is because when you put the power in it, it's linear, it goes up and straight across and back, comes back into it, okay? If you store a battery, you have a recoil spring, it goes up and it comes back down. And you're only working in this little area, okay? So you have to regulate this. This thing's constant. And what it is, you can put four drums around a main when it increases all your power to the, to run the generator. And there'll be one of these on one side and one on the other. And they reciprocate back and forth, okay? And they're rewound with solar power, you know, and stored energy. And this thing runs all the time. So whatever you're generating, they don't use those back out on the grid and whatever, penalty, whatever situation you set up to get your money for. The second thing that runs this thing and it's making it all possible is what they call a Raspberry Pi. This thing is $37. And it runs the telemetry off the generator. But it also has Wi-Fi and Bluetooth capabilities to talk to the smart meters. So, and the smart meters and everything in the house. Once you program it, a chip right here on the side is what goes into your phone. It's the same thing that runs all your software, okay? And you can program that to run all your, you know... They got me a thing for Christmas where you talk to it now and it, you know, you can turn the lights on, but it would tie into something like this. And if you've got a generator in your house from a 1 KW to a 5KW, say you've got a little area of great bend, everybody's got a generator that goes right back into the grid. And they complement each other. They run, if somebody's not there, it'll run this, it'll store the energy in it, okay? In the long run, my nephew is a security programmer down in the Chesapeake and he has solar panels on his house, okay? His electric bill's seven bucks. But he's also running what they call a Bitcoin miner system. Everybody's seeing on the news now Bitcoins the huge thing. I made a fortune on it. I bought it when it was 500 bucks. When it went to 5 grand, I paid my mortgage off. And now it's up to 20,000, or it was at 20,000. What this thing is, a Bitcoin, is it's energy intensive. It sucked the insulators right off the pole to run these miners, okay? And these miners are trying to solve a mathematical problem to earn that coin, okay? And the underlying platform of Bitcoin is called blockchain. And this is significant. Because when you have the blockchain running on Ethereum, you can generate smart contracts. And what it is, if you're a singer or a poet or whatever, you set up a smart contract for your song, there's no middleman. Financial institutions like Jamie Dimon, a person a couple of months ago, now he regrets it because everybody's going after that blockchain technology. They're writing smart contracts where it's immutable. You can't do anything to change it. It stays in the blockchain until somebody goes in there and triggers the contract. So they get, you know, whatever the benefits were. It takes out the insurance companies, it takes out the banks. Because of 2008, we put in our 100s. And what that does is, there's a lady in Toronto, it's a maid, she's cleaning, she wants to send money over to Philippines to her mom. Well, she used to have to go to Western Union. To send 300 bucks, it's $25. To receive, it's another 25 bucks. Actually, she can get to a Western Union. Now, you just pick up your phone. She types in her amount she wants to send, pushes a button that goes to the Philippines. That lady goes to a kiosk, goes like that, and it's on her phone. And she transferred it, took out the middleman. The key to blockchain technology is writing these smart contracts. And I talked to John Fritz and gave him the whole thing. And he just stood there, looked at me, he says, "Is this going on?" I said, "It's going on right now." And I said, "As a matter of fact, when I get this running, I'm going to be running Bitcoin miners. Whatever doesn't go there goes back out on the grid." And I'm talking, you know, a big building full of these miners. Over in China, they're polluting the air so bad that they have to shut those miners down because they take so much energy to do it. It's only costing me less than a penny a day. And you take the calculation to figure out how much you're going to make from that coin, one of the parameters is putting in the electrical cost. So some people are paying 12 cents a kilowatt. Chris, my nephew, was only paying 1 cent. So whatever he... So whatever he was getting, he was making. No, no. And now, we picked new ones up. This latest one now is Ripple. And this one here is, just what I was talking about, is exchange between two people. So when governments write new contracts, keep in mind the smart contracts used by the blockchain because it's immutable. That thing stays in there. And what mining does, when you mine, you download a whole ledger. The whole ledger comes to your processors. And that's immutable. You can't change it until somebody triggers the contract. And what I'm going to do in this county is, if we start the miners, we're going to try to get it so that that miner's an employee. You can tax him, okay? So we talked about, I said, if you've got somebody that's paying capital or having an employee come in, we're running out of people to pay taxes. If we've got these miners running this stuff, why can't you tax that like a robot? And that's what Bill Gates said. We should be taxing robots, and people are flipping out about it. But you've got to start raising money somewhere. So if Great Band can have a couple of solar panels in there and pay some, you know, electric bill, they can defer that money. Same thing with a county. Same thing with a generator. You're going to spend 200-some thousand to get the generator in. But if you put all in that energy microgrid in at the jail, right? If you're not using that, then it goes back out on the grid. I mean, we have to start looking like at the state shed. And all of our governments got to get together and say, "Hey, we got to get this microgrid going because everybody here's been affected by the lights being out." And they want two things. They want the refrigerator and they want lights. Well, three. They want their cell phone charged. And my brother Bob, he used to be a safety director up at Power Authority. They called him up out of retirement to go down to Puerto Rico. And he went down there in the middle of October, right after, you know, everything was still on the ground. And he worked for Whitefish, a company that got the big blowout for a $300 million contract. He trained that guy as an apprentice. And he knew him. That guy goes down to Puerto Rico on vacation, so he knew everybody. Bob said he traveled the globe putting up lines and stuff. And when that come down through, he says, "I can get your power back on." The guy said, "You want two people. So I just make a phone call. I want 50 linemen down here. I want five helicopters. I need two support shoppers to lift the towers." That's how he did it. He was connected. But they've got so much hoopla and trust and everything that, you know, he got a bad rap. But then he had no compete laws with his linemen. He said, "You guys want to stay out and make the money? Go ahead." I don't know how you do it. Everything was down in the valleys, the towers and everything. It was just destroyed. And now, these trucks and all these units are going down there and there's nothing to build to. Houses are destroyed. You know, you can sweep everything out of the roads and get the poles set. But where are these people going to get the money to, you know? They could... They didn't have any water. They couldn't get any money. They didn't go to work. Bob said it was devastating. But I think in this county now, the way I look at it, we have to set up a microgrid to keep people on. At least to keep the heat on. You know, the other day, the lights went out for a couple of hours. You know, it's ridiculous.
Well, definitely something that we're going to be looking into, especially the projects that we have coming up in the future, of trying to see what we can do to...
I would definitely go to NYSERDA up there and, you know, look up microgrid in New York State and see what they're doing. And like I say, if you're doing a smart contract, you need to look heavily into the blockchain. That's what's underneath all these cryptocurrencies. Some of these currencies coming out now are pretty impressive. Because if you're in for nickel and it goes to 500, you know, the... I love your Steve Adrian's. Works for NYSERDA over here.
I love you, Steve.
He called me the other night, two nights ago, and his son's out in California, and that's all they're doing. The millennials out there are going after the cryptocurrency. But they're also... I heard on CMB this morning, if you know anything about blockchain, you can be a consultant for 100 bucks an hour. So I won't charge you for that.
There you go. Well, we appreciate that.
But I mean, it's just another thing to look at and to raise money for the town.
Right.
If you can, I don't know. If you can tax a little bit, who knows? You know, Bill Gates is on it and he took a lot of flack. But if it takes somebody's job, they're saying, "Well, I give them an opportunity to go and learn something else." You know, they can't learn it. They have to move someplace else to, you know, gain it, in my mind. That's my spiel.
Thank you. How do you spell the word blockchain, whatever you're saying?
Blockchain, one word.
How do you spell it?
Anybody got anything else?
What is your name?
Ronnie Burton. B-U-R-T-O-N.
Thank you.
Want some germs?
I'll second that.
All fair and...
Hi.
Very good. Thank you very much.